The heat is on. Is that how that song goes?
Yeah.
Think somebody switched seats here.
Now we're all complaining about it. Aren't we complaining, isn't that funny?
Yes. There's the packet, there's the individual agenda. Jeremy is going to go.
Thank you. I will call the Finance Committee to order. And first up, we have Mr. Wallen, authorize the purchase of Finance for Deposit of Chips Funding. Sounds good.
Chips. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the first item that I have on the agenda, yep, is for the recognition and the deposit of the chips funding. This year, our chip funding was pretty much in line with our past president's 1.169 million dollars, as you see here. Also, the state did for a second year in a row, award what's called an Extreme Winter Recovery Fund, and that is the 133,892. That we treat similarly to chips, and we roll that into the program to deal with our roads, and that's usually the first thing that we do. So, in total, we'll use the Paving Central Parkway.
Nice. I think that's coming up in the agenda.
So, this is a standard. We got the letter last week, and this is, once we acknowledge the funds and deposit, we can start working on chips streets. Right now, we're paving in the Bellevue neighborhood. We just started last week, because those are some of our CDB streets where we had that money available. This allows us to go to the next, which is the chip streets. And on May 15th, we will be able to start with our general fund streets as well, as that was the bonded one.
Good. That's all good news.
Good news.
Questions, comments? Ms. Porterfield.
So, this is the streets that we've already seen the paving schedule for?
Yes.
So, this only covers those streets and Central Parkway?
Yes.
The, yeah, this, when the budget was adopted, the plan was put in place, the governor's budget did not have the Extreme Winter Recovery Fund. The legislature put that back in, so there's 133,000, give or take a little, then going out for the bonding on May 15th. I think this is for the, it was plenty for the capital project. I think we went out, right, April 29th, Tony? And when we can actually use the fund, this is where we're placing. So, yes.
Yes, so is that for the Extreme Weather Condition Recovery, Extreme Winter Recovery? So, are there other streets that are also that would come under that specific funding?
At the moment, we don't have, I have some streets that we're looking at, but we don't have anything, you know, for example, Brandywine wasn't on the list originally. That was something that we did, just because of the condition of it. So, we have Brandywine on one of our lists. Also, Van Belsing, which is up by Altamont, because we're going to be in Altamont, we've got some complaints, because that's kind of a heavy business area over there.
That's a big cut through.
So, right now, the areas that we're looking at, I have the Brandywine, Van Belsing, Central Parkway, and Unadilla and Ardsley, I don't know if we had some sewer issues there. It's right off of Knox Street. We're kind of looking at that area there where we had some breaks. We've had a lot of complaints about that area. But that, that would total, right, we're close, 150,000 around. So, it's flexible, like I said, but those are what we have right now. Right now, I can disseminate this in the future, but this is our total. This is what you had originally seen, these streets above, this is that. And then, then we have an additional down here that we're looking at, given the condition of the roads. So, that's what we have right now.
Mr. Wallen, I don't recall whether Edison Avenue is on the paving schedule.
Oh, yeah. Edison Avenue is, pretty much now. What they're doing right now is they're doing Broadway as we speak. They did Broadway today. Then they're going to mobilize that equipment down to Edison. Edison, we already milled it, pretty much. So, paving plants, I believe they're going to be paving it actually with shroom leveling this week. The paving plants actually both broke today. Both of them shut down, so we had to stop. If anybody noticed, this paving operation in the Bellevue area kind of trapped the plant on an issue. But Edison is, along with these, it was at the top. And then after we get done with Edison and some of these Bellevue streets, it's just Broadway and Turner, we're going to move over to Altamont, and then Brandywine, and then really start on some of these. So, Central Parkway is on the list now. I don't know if it's going to be, you know, we're trying to do it so we don't have to mobilize several times. So, we're going to try to work it when we're in that area. But, yeah, Edison is, because Edison is bad.
Yeah, it's about milling itself, actually. Mr. Koch, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, can we get that list emailed to us, Chris?
Sure. Yeah, once, I'm going over it tomorrow once more with Steve, and then I'll can get it out.
Send it to me. Thank you.
Senator Tom.
Yep.
Other questions or comments?
I'd like to move.
Just one more question. How does this tie in with our Paving Schedule?
This is independent of the Paving Schedule.
All right. Maybe we have the next stuff, we throw it over there as a real thought. Just kidding.
If we have a little extra stuff, we do throw it over.
Okay.
Anything else to come before the Finance Committee?
I'd like to move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm. Get back in.
Did you adjourn the subject?
Adjourn please.
Yeah, oh, right.
I'll move to adjourn.
Would you like to adjourn the Finance Committee?
All in favor?
Aye.
Who do you have? Wow. It's hard. All right, I think we're recovered.
Door is on.
He's fine now. For Health and Recreation? I see. Mr. Howard?
I will be speaking for Mr. Howard.
Okay, so, contract for purchase of chlorine for 250 pool season.
This was a pretty cut and dry, which is why I just thought I would take it. We put out for the purchase of pool chlorine for the season. We received two bids. They are attached, and we would like to award to the low bidder, which is surface chemical.
Are there any questions?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else to come before Health and Recreation?
Just a quick question, maybe Chris you're aware or not, pillars part pool, there's a pretty severe crack in there, losing a lot of water.
Yep.
Is that any idea? Be done?
Well, I believe that Jeremy has contacted a pool vendor, and they've actually gone up to see if they can come up with solutions for it, but I'm unaware of what, if the meeting's taken place, or what's been discussed. But you're, what you've said is what I've heard, is that there's a crack between the low end and the, right, at one of the joints, and that they're believing that that's where they're losing water through.
Yeah.
So, but I don't know anything more than that at the moment.
It's going, not like a foot, foot and a half.
Ten inches a day. Yep. So, what they're concerned about is any undermining underneath if the water's.
It's going to my cellar, I think. That's where I found it.
You said you don't forget what.
We've got the heater, heater, sorry.
Another question. All right, I just want to, I'll just mention that everyone knows that this past Saturday was, I love Schenectady Park Day, and so all the parks had a really good turnout, and I believe Mr. Frank is working on something that will say how many volunteers, how many hours, and what the results were. So, I was only in one park, but we had a great turnout, and I've heard the other parks did as well.
I think we had over 100 people of the various parks. So, the weather was good, it was great turnout, and it makes a significant difference in perception and visual attractiveness of the parks.
It's a good thing. Anything else? Otherwise, I can pin them on.
Motion, Major. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good.
I'd like to call to order Public Services and Utilities. First item on the agenda is to award the bidding contract for the city of Schenectady Police Station Roof Replacement, Midstate Industries.
Yep. So, what we have here is the final replacement of the remaining sections of the police station roof. Last year, we had an emergency replacement of two sections of roof. The roof was a loose-laid rubber roof with ballast. We, for that roof, we took off the ballast and put down a deteriorated rubber roof, I believe nine mils, and what this is a continuation of that, so that the whole roof is within one, you know, timeframe. Roof, Midstate was the low bid, was a very, very good bid, very fair, within budget. We have plenty of budget on the project. This will update all roofs and repair all roofs on the police station. So, all the roofs on the police station going forward will have a 20-year warranty and last year, and so 19-year warranty, so we should be good. And it's a, it's a good product. I met with several roofing vendors and looked at a bunch of things, and this does seem to be the most applicable project for the roof, so.
Any questions, Ms. Frank?
I just want to say that I'm very pleased, first of all, with the competitive pricing on the bid, and also that it's a local company. The other ones, you know, were out of state and significantly further away, so I think both of those things are great.
Any other questions?
Have we done business with Midstate before?
Oh, yes. Yeah, Midstate actually put on the roof last year under an emergency, and they also won the pavilion job, which is going on right now in Central Park.
Good. Keep it local.
If anybody is, just a quick update on that, the roof has been replaced. We put back approximately 1,300 feet, half-inch deck. Now it has the membrane on it. The new roof is ordered. The pavilion has been power washed, and our painter was on-site today prepping and painting the pavilion. He'll be painting it over this week. I think he might be going back and forth painting this in the pools, but it'll be done in a couple of weeks, and then we're going to have Midstate come back, and he's going to be putting the metal on. So, the pavilion should be all set in a matter of, I'd say, three or three weeks plus or minus, depending on the metal.
Second?
Second, I'm on the agenda, is Central Parkway road condition.
I was just, I think we've all gotten letters, and I just wanted to make sure that we're adding it to.
Do you have any kind of a timeframe on that?
I don't have a timeframe right now, no. I mean, it was just added. We just, we're awarded the chips money, we're still working on the CDBG funds. We really want to get Edison and Altamont done before we move on, because that's kind of something I said, if we milled it, we're going to do those first.
Sure.
But, no, it's, we have it higher on the list once we get there. I'm thinking that we probably will be able to get there when we do Brandywine, because the streets are similar proximity. But, right now, I don't have a definite timeframe to tell you.
When you identify that?
Actually, what I'm going to be doing is putting a timeframe with that list that I showed you, just so that everybody knows kind of what month you're marking for each street. So that you have an idea, so that you can communicate that to your residents.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions, any other discussion? Next item on the agenda is to award the bidding contract for hot-in-place asphalt recycling to Highway Rehabilitation Works.
So, this is our, an annual, this is, we do not actually bid this project. This is through the county. This is a county bid item that the city awards off of, as is possible with a county, city, municipal relationship. We've used, I believe, Hot, Highway Rehab for hot-in-place asphalt recycling going on five or six years now. It really allows us to treat a lot of roads with it. We're going to be focusing, once again, in the Woodlawn area. This product is really good on some of our dirt streets, because they're longer, longer roads. They allow us to kind of, what was the word, treat longer roads. This is a process, just so everyone knows too, that it's not one-size-fits-all. They have what's called a train. This is the train where you have the two heater trucks and the rejuvenator truck, so you can't do it very easily in city streets or tight urban locations or dead ends. So, we, we picked this, this, the whole idea with the paving program is making sure we're using the right treatment on the right street. So, this is, just to award that, so that we can use it on some of our streets. I don't have a schedule for this. Typically, they come in in the August month. Usually, they do that right after or before they do the county roads. But I don't have a schedule, as I haven't talked with anyone from Highway Rehab yet.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other items to come before Public Services?
Major Field.
Okay, I'll call to order City Development and Planning. Item numbers, items number one and two, we will hold for executive session. Item number three is a revocable permit for 1613 Union Street, flowers by Joe.
Thought I had two ahead of me. So, this is a revocable permit for the store in the newly renovated building at Upper Union Street. The sign is pretty typical for what is up there. It is not too large, it is overhanging the right-of-way, so it does require a revocable permit. It has passed development standards, and this is for the issuance of a permit for that sign.
Ms. Porterfield.
So, I noticed that the storefront right next to it has a sign that is flat to the building. Does the rest of the building have signs that are flat to it also? Is this the only sign that's going to hang over into the right-of-way?
That's an excellent question, which I don't know. I don't, engineering does not actually deal with the sign. We deal with the projection of the sign into the right-of-way. That would be more of Christine's area of how the sign kind of fits into the cityscape.
I think the only sign that's up there right now is the cupcakes, from my knowledge.
Any other questions? If not, I will only entertain a motion to approve this. Okay, Ms. Porterfield, second, aye. John?
Aye.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, you too. Item number four is a ceremonial resolution for Ed August. Ms. Porterfield. Yes, Ed August will be retiring from DNI, and so the board reached out, they would like to have a ceremonial resolution actually presented at their event, at their spring month, so they would like from the city council what they want presented. So, actually, this would need to go out to the end, not for this Monday, but our next, two weeks from this Monday, because they want to have all the details of what they'd like in there. But I just want to make sure we brought it forward. Got it? So, it'll be going on two weeks from now. So, we'll have the actual resolution written appropriately. Okay, so we'll just hold this then for two weeks. Okay. And a ceremonial resolution for the Women of Distinction. Yes, so, a San woman, Santa Margaret, for the second year, has done something called Women of Distinction, and it's women all over his district, not just Schenectady. But five of those six women that were honored are from Schenectady. So, what I'd like to see is us have a resolution for those, for the five who actually live or work in Schenectady. And the other woman, what I'm planning to do is actually, I have a colleague who works, who's in that district where she works, and maybe they can get the city council to do something for her. But the five that work or live in Schenectady, I'd like to see a resolution for that. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Okay, moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, adoption of the 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan. Over the weekend, I think I've talked with most of you, and I kind of took, suggested, and I've given you a copy of what, what the things we have talked about. So, I'm just going to throw this out on the table for conversation. Basically, what we looked at was in the Neighborhood Stabilization category. The feeling was, feeling seemed pretty much unanimous, to give an additional 3892 to the Hamilton Hill Art Center, which gets them up to the amount they requested. Give an additional 1,108 to Better Neighborhoods, and to take that funding from MCTAP. We, I think there's feelings with MCTAP that we need, they need to be looking else, other places for funding, that we shouldn't be the sole provider of funding. And so, the thinking seemed to be that this would be the way to go. In the area of Public Services, strong feelings about awarding funds to the Schenectady Basketball Club and the Schenectady Youth Boxing Program. So, what I'm suggesting is, line 48, we take $1,000 from the Boys and Girls Club. Line 52, we take 2,000 from Community Police. Line 55, we take 1,000 from the Schenectady Youth Bureau. Line 59, we take 5,000 from the YMCA. And that way, then, we can award 4,500 each to the basketball club and the youth boxing. So, as I said, I will throw that out for comments, questions.
Just a caution. One caution, if I can. With the application for the basketball, because that went through Sickom, am I correct? And I don't know if I CC you in my email, and I apologize. Did Sickom have anything in there for administrative fees?
No, they did not. They are, the basketball club themselves actually does have a tactic. They're going to have Sickom be their financial agent.
Their fiscal, okay.
So, yeah, so their fiscal arm. So, but yeah, they have not put anything in the budget for any administrative.
Because the whole 45 will go right to the kids. That's a very good answer. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I think the sports programs are very important, and I would be able to fund those, because it's important to keep the kids occupied in the sports.
Okay.
Everybody, just one more comment, if I can. I did talk with Shane Barguiere earlier today of this possibility, and again, both his program and the one of the youth bureau are both, we operate the pools and the programs at Quack and Bush and Steyman's and Hillhurst Park. And one thing we are adding this year at the Hillhurst Pool is Saturday swimming, open swimming for Saturdays now. So, we're actually going to be open six days a week, including an afternoon. So, taking away that $1,000, we're kind of hoping we might get some iffy weather here and there, where we've shut down a half a day earlier, not a full day. But we've always had enough money to cover the lifeguard, so we just believe that this will affect a little bit of supply money, but certainly very, very doable, and we're very happy to, of course, it's under des, but I think it's, we're very happy to support the other two programs as well.
Great. Good, thank you. Okay, any other comments?
No, I mean, just an observation, I think this is good. I mean, I'm happy that we can have the basketball and the youth boxing getting funding, and I think that's pretty much what we can do at this point in time.
Okay.
Very comfortable with it.
Good, all right.
And one final, please. I actually spoke with Vince Kittle today. He called me. I'm going to visit there this Wednesday at 4:30, because I've never been in the boxing program. And it's right in my Woodlawn area, and I really didn't know it was there. So, if any of my council members or anybody from the county wanted to go visit, it'll be this Wednesday at 4:30, right at the Crosstown Plaza there, I guess they're located, so. We're bringing them, actually, bringing them summer job applications for those kids. We have, we still have quite a few spots that we're looking for, so we're going to do a little workshop with some of those kids and actually fill the job applications, and hopefully get them in by the May 12th deadline. So, it'll be winnable for all these kids, so it'll be a good opportunity. All right.
Ms. Porterfield. This is in a different category, and under, under housing, the second mortgage program, I see that we're just this year going to the program income. So, I didn't know if there was something that we could, some of the way that this particular program being continued, because if it's going on program income, I don't know how many, first time nobody is going to be able to help us. One, the problem. It's number 35 under housing.
It has historically been through program income, and it's usually where if we start getting program income from any kind of sales under the home program, we can, we can reallocate it into the program. So, that's the idea, that we've got a couple properties going on right now that we think are going to end up generating some program income, so we're thinking about being able to fully fund it at a different level. But in the past, it has been only 8,000, because it generates its own revenue as well.
Didn't last year, where, where did the money come from last year? Because there was, there was quite some money that was actually.
They, it generates, in the way that the people end up paying back, it ends up generating its own money. So, last year was 8,000 in program income as well.
But there was other money as well, because I was actually on the committee, and so there was more than 8,000. I don't know if you remember, Vince said we, we gave out more than, much more than 8,000. So, I was just trying to figure out where was that.
We had to scramble if you had to give out some more money. There was too much money left.
Yeah. It might be program income that came out, not through the Consolidated Plan.
Okay, it came from someplace else, because there was quite a bit of money left, and we had to like hurry up and, you know, make a plan.
So. Yeah, it usually dries up around now, and then, once we get the new fiscal year, and then the projects start to kind of churn out, we have a chunk of money that we're able to put back in.
So, the other money, where did it come from, where again?
Other home projects that would be generating program income.
Okay, okay. Mr. Ferrari, you look like you were going to comment.
I was going to comment on where it is. Well, what had happened is, they received home monies, and you have five years to spend the home monies. But what had happened is because they were generating so much program income, you have to use a program income first.
Okay.
Is that, it came that five years was up there. That's why you had that frenzy, spend that five-year money that we had, budgeted five years prior. That's why, that's what happened. That's how we got.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And that's why we're back for that paperwork, not the, you program income, and then, essentially, year by year, and add some home monies so that it goes on.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I put a couple of notes on the sheet I gave you, this, again, based on my conversations with some of you, about the fact that, you know, looking to the future, we want to see more collaboration among similar groups, you know, as these fundings keep getting less and less. This is, it's the only way we're going to be able to do some of this. And I mentioned earlier, we do not want to be the sole funding source for any organization. There's got to be an expectation that they're going to be seeking funds in additional areas. And we also want to see concrete goals. I think some of the applications, the goals are kind of weak in terms of it's either we're going to do a program, or we're going to meet with people, and things like that, but it's not specific about, we are going to help X number of people find employment, some employment. So, I think just some kind of word for the future, that these are things that you all will be looking at.
We're going to call you in.
We'll call you in.
And just to add one more layer to that, I think we're speaking to everyone, even the people that have applied to this program, or this funding for many, many years, who, you know, may have fallen into a little bit of a habit when filling out their application, that they really need to look differently at their applications next year.
Yes, Ms. Porterfield. So, will we be changing, because the application guidelines and directions are pretty, have been the same for a number of years. So, will we be making any changes to those, so that, that, you know, we just want to tell people that it's actually written in, and that this is what we'd like to see from you?
That's my intent. When we do the contract to award this as well, we, we have a scope that we end up putting in, like, performance targets, and I want to strengthen that about this year, too, so.
Excellent. That's necessary. And Ms. Mancini's also indicated that she's going to be sending letters to every one of these groups, you know, letting them know what the results of this were.
And also people that we, we are not funding, just as a courtesy.
Yes.
Good. Ms. Porterfield. So, I know that they keep doing quarterly reports for, for this department of development. So, is there, anyway, maybe we could consider having people just come in and just kind of talk to us about what they're doing, if, you know, we had the other group that used to come in, different projects everywhere. So, it could get, maybe throughout the year, just have people just, you know, if, not only let us know what they're doing, also let the public know what's going on, and sort of how the tax, how the dollars are being spent, and also about programs that maybe they didn't know about. Good. All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve these changes to the proposed plan. Okay. Mr. Ferrari, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, and speaking of, the Schenectady Housing Development Fund Corporation, Mr. Riggi and Ms. Porterfield were our two appointees. Mr. Riggi has had to resign, because it's, they meet at a time when he has to take his wife to work. So, I am looking to see if there is a volunteer among the rest of you. You don't have to let me know right this minute. My understanding is that they're, they supposedly meet monthly, but they really don't, you know, maybe a couple, a few times a year.
Depending on when they have application.
Okay, yeah. And I know.
I think, because Anthony just.
Exactly.
I didn't realize that, because we had a rush, we were meeting quite a bit for a little while.
Oh, okay. Okay. But, so anyway, if, if any of you would consider, you know, their, their board, I think calls for two appointments from the council. I think originally it stated one from the majority party, one from the minority party, but then I think they had to revise, because there were a couple of years when it was just the majority party, so I think there's some flexibility in that, so it can be, it can be someone else. And I know I had done it a number of years ago, but, so please let me know. The Sicam Summer Lunch Program, I think we all received a letter. They would like to maybe get a team of us to be able to cover a week working in this program at the library. The, I just wanted to put it on just to see if there's general support for this. We would be looking at meeting four people every day. I didn't put the hours down, but I think from when I did it last year, it was like eleven to one, or something like that. As I said, it would be at the library, and it would be one week, and within the timeframe of July twentieth to August fourteenth. She also indicated that, you know, since there's only seven of us, that we could, maybe other city employees might be interested in participating in this as well. So, I just wanted to get a sense, is there support for trying to do this? And if so, I will work on this and try to come up with one week and see who can, is able to volunteer for it.
I'm certainly willing to do a day or two. I can't do every day.
Right.
But, yes, absolutely, I've done it, I've done it for a number of years now, and really enjoy it.
Yeah, it is fun.
If you want to come to Central.
If you want to come to Central Park, I'll be there every day.
If you want to change the site, you come to Central Park, we serve over two hundred lunches there.
Wow.
But I'll certainly be there every day in Central Park, so if you want to change the site, come and visit us over there, it'll be fun.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Dupreeville?
Is that, so is that the only site, they're only going to have?
That's, that's the site she is suggesting, just because it's so close to City Hall. She's trying to get as convenient for us as possible.
I see.
Yeah. But I mean, I'm sure they need volunteers at other sites, but this idea was, again, just to put a team of us, you know, together to just cover a week, so. So, generally support?
Yeah.
Very much so. Yes, yes.
So, I'll, I'll play with that then a little bit more. Okay, and the last two items are going to be in executive session, so at this point I'll entertain a motion to recess city development and planning. Okay, Mr. Ferrari, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, I will call government operations to order. Our first item is the property sales procedure, Mr. Faladico.
For a while, the council's been asking about ready property sales procedures. I emailed something around a couple of weeks ago, a week ago. So, I know it's part of the package, if you have any questions.
I'm just happy it spells it out now. You know, and we have a clear view of exactly what goes into this. So, when people call and ask us, you know, I, I personally can, you know, go and look at this in some sort of a rubric that I can follow.
And the one thing I should say is we did get one comment back from Councilmember King about the adding in, just what is required to put in an offer.
Right.
And we're working on getting that set, and so we'll email that around when we have it.
Okay, and the second one, which I thought of after I sent the first one, is again, who does it go to? Who does, you know, if they're putting a proposal or a letter or whatever, who do they deliver it to, to start the process?
It goes to Mary Ellen O'Brien, it's a law department.
Okay, but I think it's back to be included here, too.
And I don't know that this is, we're working on something that could be posted on the city website. Something that spells it out, this is more of an internal, how we're going to handle it, and then something for the public saying, this is what you do if you want to put in an offer of a property, and even the timeframe, so you should expect it to take.
Good.
Is there any differentiation for city employees that we want to mutate? Or is this procedure the same where we want it?
This procedure here is the same for everyone, in general. We go with the same for everyone. You see, number ten is kind of a catch-all, where if there are unique factors, circumstances that justify deviation from the process, we, we're free to do that, but that's the kind of thing the council would be made aware of.
Oh, the law department loves those catch-al. This is the rule, except we decide, you want to do it a different way. But no, it's, it's nice to have something in writing, and I know we do have unique circumstances that we deal with. Other questions, comments, Mr. Murphy?
On the number six, where it says maybe requested, can we use a different, a few different words there, maybe requested, remove that? I want it to be standard and general across. If we're asking for documents, it should be for everybody and not for, you know?
No, this is just to say that we didn't want it to be that we have to ask for these exact things from everybody, because people will come in with different circumstances. So, somebody's got a trust fund, we're not going to ask them for their last two paychecks if they tell them they have a job. We just wanted to make sure that, that this is an example of what we might ask for and justify what it says in part six, but that we're not locked into having to do the same things for everyone if it doesn't work.
Other questions, comments? And this is just procedure already, we don't have?
No, no.
Is there anything, no, nothing that makes account law people want?
So, this, so this will be going into effect as a?
This is what we've been doing already. This is, the council said they wanted to see something in writing that described the procedures we've been following. I'd get that, we've been following these for, you know, at least the last six months, not much longer than that.
Okay.
Probably substantially longer than that.
Well, yeah, but we have had situations where there was some misinformation and some, you know.
Number ten.
Yeah. Yeah, we run out of ways of the ten. Don't make the council straight number ten. Any other questions or comments?
None.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Faladico. And although this is under my name, I, next we're moving to the Housing Standards Review Board, as discussed at our last committee meeting, I did take the council's feedback to Mr. Faladico, and we sat down and talked about it, and came up with a new version for everyone to review, and I will let Mr. Faladico go over that, and I'll speak before I do. So, the, actually, I will just jump right in, and then I'll let you do it. We did add in section sixty-eight dash two, membership, that people would have to be current on their taxes, that was one suggestion that was made. The other suggestion was?
Fields.
Yeah. Where is that?
The second page, the third column.
Yes, so we added the housing survey back in, although we, corporate ship council did suggest that they recommend areas, that they don't designate areas, and I think that's very fair. And then the last thing was the appeals. And Mr. Faladico and I discussed this for a while. Both of us have concern about slowing down the rate of appeals in any way, because it still is linked to potential citizen safety. So, what we came up with as a compromise to bring back to the table for the council's review or consideration is that the board be able to review cases once the appeal process was finished. So, if somebody really felt like they, you know, weren't treated fairly, that they, misinformation or whatever, similar to the police civilian review board, the case comes to them already closed for their review and their recommendation to the city, rather than holding up an appeals process for a cycle, two cycles, or wherever the case may be, where we could have someone living in unsafe conditions, because I just, I really can't sleep at night thinking about that. So, I will ask for your comments and consideration on those, or comments and questions on those three things that were identified the last time.
So, the appeals process kicks in after it's adjudicated?
It's not as much of a, in terms of the appeals process, as it was outlined before, it's not the same. It's a process where the language is taken from the civilian police review board, where once a case is processed, then the people have a right to come to the board and say, I don't feel like I was treated fairly for X, Y, Z reason. Then the board takes an independent look at the facts, and they make a determination based on.
They make a recommendation. Questions, comments?
That's, that's what's been added, so I think it's D, section?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Porterfield.
This has, starts with six, sixty-eight point two, which is the membership, and I know that this year that the mayor is going to be doing appointments, but we all received the memo, I guess it is, from SLIC, where they wanted to be able to submit a, submit qualified candidate, so they would then submit that to the mayor to, for his approval.
We have the ability to consider anybody, and kind of put together a group of balance and different levels of expertise that would service the needs and set forth in whatever legislation we adopt.
So, everything should come to your office, though? Any candidates that people would like to recommend?
Yeah, and that was one of our initial changes, was that a property owner, a multi-unit property owner, who needs to be in the board. Other questions, comments? Okay, so I do need a motion to move this, if we are there.
We need another public hearing on this, since we made changes?
The changes aren't substantial enough to, to satisfy the requirement.
Good, thanks for that question. So, since it's no longer appeals, after the recommendations, and it's been closed, and it goes to the board, and they make the recommendations, what happens after that?
It would come back to the mayor or to the city council to make the appropriate adjustments or consider in terms of policy changes.
Other questions, comments? Okay, you need a motion? Do you have a second? All those are favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you for everyone, you know, for all the input and hard work, and, you know, I think we've been talking about this for a long time, and we finally got to a good, fair place where everyone's so attentive, and we also have a board in place to address some of the concerns of our local landlords. Oh, and I'm so sorry, did we also add in there, not only for landlords to be able to come before the board, but also tenants? That was another thing that we discussed, that we were going to add in.
It's okay, I thought it didn't need to be added in specifically, because under sixty-eight one A, to receive comments from the public related to housing standards requirements in New York and the cities Schenectady.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, if you just comment somebody.
Okay, so we don't need another one?
It definitely would be in, have new tenants, it's probably make their, their concern.
Yeah, very good. Okay, excellent. Any other business to come before government operations?
I will be adjourned.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Call to other public safety, city towing policies. Mr. Faladico.
Okay.
I'll defer to the council for people if you want.
So, I was contacted by a couple of people actually in regards to the vehicle being towed specifically by Bobars, which is Interstate slash Bobars, I guess is their, their name. And not so much the towing itself, but the, the ultimate disposition of the vehicle after it was towed. And, and there seemed to be some inconsistencies in how it was handled. So, I began to question, you know, what is Bobars' policy on how it, how things happen once a vehicle's towed and brought to their, their place, you know, or if it's brought to their place, or if it's taken somewhere else? So, there's, there was some, you know, I got some different answers to my questions. So, I know that the city is working currently on what the towing policies would be, and being very specific in terms of, you know, on, on what should happen after a person's vehicle gets towed, and, you know, how they end up getting it back, or, or when, when it finally becomes the possession of Bobars, because ultimately that can happen, is, is, as I understand it. So, we're working, Mr. Faladico could probably talk more about the contract that's been working on right now. I know that we're not under contract with them.
We have a, an older contract with the towing companies in place, but what we've been working on, and what we feel like this month we're going to be ready to do, is put out a request for proposals for towing services with an attachment to that being our new towing contract. Most of these time periods for towing cars and how they're held are defined by state law. Some of the terms or situations can be a little ambiguous, so we're going to lay it out very clearly, see what comes back in terms of interest in the city's towing services, and then kind of go from there. But that's something that we're looking to be ready to do here in May.
One of the specific questions that came to me was that there's, there's no limit on the amount that you can be charged. So, if your car stays there for, since January, which is one person's situation, they're looking at a bill about seven thousand dollars right now. So, they.
Need storage?
Yes, storage. So, as long as it stays there, the lot continues to take, there is no ceiling, monthly, ever. As long as the vehicle stays there, they just, they just keep charging. Eventually, it gets to a point where if you, if it stays there long enough, obviously, you know, depending on the age of the vehicle and all of that, people aren't going to want it then. So, that was one of the concerns.
Go ahead.
So, that seems like it does, we, we were just talking, because I was asking about, I didn't see anything as far as like when Bobars will take possession of a car, time-wise within the contract? And you had said to me, if it was two thousand six or older, it was thirty days, two thousand seven and newer, it was forty-five days. So, how can a car, and then Bobars can take it and crush it.
Right.
So, then how can a car be there from January? Don't they already have possession of the car, and they can crush it?
They have an option, that is an option. They said it's state law, that after thirty days, if it's two thousand six and older, they can crush it after forty-five days, if it's two thousand seven and newer, they can. But apparently, that's, it's very clear to the, that this vehicle has been there since January, that they're not doing that.
Right.
But they do have the option, which sort of raises the question to me, that if they don't, then how they can continue to charge? But, you know, we could talk about that on and off, but, yeah, they do have that option, is what she explained to me from my state law.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy. I'm just a little confused. I mean, once you get your car towed, why would you leave it there that long? I mean, you're going to build storage, so the idea is to get it back in your possession as soon as you can, when it's X amount of dollars a day. So, if a car's staying there for forty-five days or longer, apparently the people, either they can't afford to get the car back, or they don't want it anymore.
Well, I'll talk about this particular situation, since the person said they went there and was told that their vehicle was sold. That's what they said they were told. That's, that's not the case, though, because I went to find out, and no one's, they said that they were told that it was sold. They were never, that's what they said they were told, but, you know, I went to find out, and that's not true. The, the other part of it is that they felt that they were never given the option to tow it to ABC Garage, as opposed to towing it to their lot. So, that was also, they were never given the option, that's where it went.
You mean in an accident situation?
It was an accident situation.
I thought we were supposed to give the option to a person if they had a preferable garage or towing service, and we discussed that when I first got on the council. It's right to, you know, choose their own choice. We're not doing that anymore, is anybody aware?
We do, the, this, for a circumstance, it was actually a Rotterdam, also.
Yeah. That's another situation, which somehow Rotterdam police is involved. And so, Mr. Faladico.
See, Rotterdam police, they go by a, they go by, they change, yeah. One week it's this shop, the next week it's the next towing service. They got a rotating schedule where they use three or four towing services, and they're all on for a week at a time, that I know.
Well, I mean, it was in the heart of Schenectady, so I'm not really sure why Rotterdam police were involved, so Mr. Faladico is going to help work through the details on actually both of those situations. So, but it just brings up a lot of different questions on what happens after a car gets towed, and so that we need to probably firm things up, so that it doesn't look like the city is, you know, just kind of like letting it happen without.
Yeah, because actually what happens is cars get steered to certain places. That's been going on since the beginning of time, so that can happen.
So, the contract will tighten up so that doesn't happen, right?
Yes.
So, just to recap, like, when are you looking for, to look at these contracts, the RFP?
There's no action necessary by the council tonight. I, they put my name next to this, but I didn't actually ask for the speaker to honor it.
That was me. But I think what this.
My question is that you mentioned just on that you're going to be looking to send out RFP to get contract in for towing.
Yes.
When are you looking to do that?
By the end of May.
End of May?
Yes.
Okay. Any other business before public safety?
I will be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Get to order claims, entertain a motion, go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. Aye.
Aye.